And gracious God, Father, thank you, Lord, for goodness and other day of life. Thank you, Lord, for your son and the sacrifice he made for us in cover stuff. Thank you for the blessings you bestowed upon us, Lord, as we go through a meeting here. We ask that you guide us and help us, sir. Help us to do the best job we can for the people of Buchanan County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Okay, moving on to number three, consigning agenda, does everybody have time to look it over? Motion by Mr. King, second by Mr. Stiltner, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Stiltner, Mr. Rye, Mr. King, Mr. Cooper, and I'm a yes. Number four, public comments.
Good evening to Mr. Chairman, members of the board, coming to you this evening regarding two grant projects that the Buchanan County Sheriff's Office has been awarded. On May the eleventh, the Buchanan County Sheriff's Office was awarded a grant, an ARPA grant from the American Rescue Plan in a sum of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. This is a no-match grant. And with that grant, I would add, it is an equipment grant where we be purchasing equipment and supplies, things of that nature, that are covered under the ARPA grant. With that in mind, I have two requests for the board. First, I'm requesting that Mr. Horn be allowed to accept the grant on behalf of Buchanan County Board of Supervisors and sign the statement of grand award once it is received.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you says for equipment?
Yes.
Radios, vehicles?
Vehicles, radios, forensic equipment, forensic and computer platforms, intelligent cameras, some other stuff we didn't go with license plate readers and stuff like that. Yes, it's equipment only, no staff funding in this one.
Automobiles.
We did put in for one transportation van that was put in. We run long-range transportations and that puts wire and tire on the patrol vehicles and things of that nature. This would be a standalone van used like when we're taking people, long-term transports, whether it's for extradition or mental health, things of that nature, that would what that vehicle would be utilized for. It will keep miles down on their rentals because we are racking them up. And I can tell you from experience, if you deal with a juvenile TDO, you're usually going to Norfolk.
One more question, sir.
How much money you say it was?
Six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, no match.
One more question, Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to accept the grant and allow Mr. Horn to process it.
Mr. Stiltner, and second by Mr. King, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Cooper, Mr. King, Mr. Rye, Mr. Stiltner, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Atkins, and I'm a yes.
The second part of this grant, due to it being sizable, is I'm asking the board for an additional appropriation in the amount of the grant to be placed in Fund Thirty-Three, Sheriff's Office Equipment Fund. This money will be reimbursed on a quarterly basis based on what we spend. So it's basically like a loan. I did speak with Trish Rowe today about that to look and see if we could utilize some other type of fund where it'd be easier for the bookkeepers because we're pouring money out of this line at them, that line at them, and having to reallocate, and this will just keep everything in one fund.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Rowe, do you have a problem with? Waiting on you, Ms. Rowan.
It doesn't work.
Well, that's what that was.
Yeah, that was. Is it gonna work? No, it won't work that way.
How to do that? Okay, and honestly, if this is approved, we will not start doing any purchase orders till after July anyway, so it.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Motion on Florida, second by Mr. King, any discussion? Mr. Atkins, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Stiltner, Mr. Rye, Mr. King, Mr. Cooper, and I'm a yes.
For the ARPA grant is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Sandy, I'll give you everything I've got right up here. To put in with the Fund Thirty-Three was my request, but that's a. Mr. Chairman, the second grant is the SRO continuation grant. It's last year, as the board knows, the governor allowed that grant to be a no-match grant, however, this year it is a match grant. It'll keep our funding, to keep our SROs into our covered schools for the 2023 and 2024 school year. If the board is willing, I'm asking the board to allow Mr. Horn to accept the grant on behalf of Buchanan County and sign the statement of grand award once it's received. It is no new position than what we have right now. That grant is a, hold on. The total of the grant is three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-nine. And that was the situation we had under previous administration with Sheriff Foster, as well as there's complaints under Sheriff McClanahan. But one of the things, we have a lieutenant, Lieutenant Fletcher, she is the SRO lieutenant. And if any of the schools or anyone has an issue, they can go through the direct supervisor, and if they can't get an answer then, obviously take it up to either Major Thompson, Chief Breeding, or Sheriff Foster. And so it can be rectified immediately instead of us trying to go back and figure out when this is going on.
Is that the, I guess, the grant, the positions, I mean, their positions, they're supposed to be in the school doing the.
They're primarily assigned to specific schools as their primary thing. They can go to other schools to assist. They also have situations where if they have court or things of that nature, they do have to leave the school and go to court. That's kind of.
I had heard some, you know, I can't remember which school it was now, but they had said that one of them had something like out, you know, doing something, you know, pretty far away from the school, you know, on the school grounds or whatever, you know, and I thought, you know, I would hope that they would be, you know, in the school and in position.
And what I'll do is I'll relay that to the sheriff as well to make sure, and he gets with Lieutenant Fletcher and make sure that that is being took care of. For those, not only grant positions, but the other schools as well. And like I said, if there's, if you go by the school today and you know my Hatfield is a SRO, that school, you know, for me personally, if I'm not there and I don't have a reason, then I should be dealt with.
Well, here's the thing with courts, too. I mean, I'm sure that people have to report, but if there's a school shooting and they report and we're running there, and we're officers there, I can care less what. So I'm not, they want to figure out something else or, you know, have another festival there. We're gonna fund it, it's a danger. We need the police there, they must have the police there. If we don't need the police and we can go to court and we can lot of gag up and down the road somewhere in districts, then the question comes up, do we really need it? So, you know, I'm starting to have a problem with that, so.
Are you good with this one? I'll make a motion to.
There's a motion by Mr. Stiltner, second by Mr. King, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Stiltner, Mr. Rye, Mr. King, Mr. Cooper, and I'm a yes.
I can pass along, or will you get it took care of? All right, thank you. Feel much all I have tonight. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Like the Twilight Zone, another him has. I'll walk out while you talk.
Now, I just, I just come down to see if I can get some help getting some internet at my house. I keep young ones all the time, and I'm having a real hard time from doing the schoolwork and stuff.
Where do you live at?
Up in Hoppa Branch.
Hoppa Branch?
Yeah. I check with Spectrum, they asked me five thousand dollars for twelve hundred feet of cable.
I know we were doing some of that, and I actually got, I talked to one of the providers. I know back during the COVID days, we were funding some of that line to get run. Are we still doing that? Is Scotty y'all involved in any of that, or is that still ongoing?
Mr. Atkins, the projects you're charging specifically, to my knowledge, all closed out probably eighteen months ago, so.
Yeah, I know those projects closed out. I'm asking, can we, do we still have that option available?
We are actively involved in managing multi-millions of dollars in state grant funds for the deployment that I keep internet. Here tonight, prepared to speak, we'll build out. I'll have to dig into this gentleman's specific physical address to give a more of an exact answer.
I've called and there's somebody says, oh, wait a minute. I mean, I've called every couple of months.
I'm still dealing with the same issues on strike for as I was when it all started. It was supposed to be part of the program, and then, you know, we got some folks on this, what.
You tried Starlink?
I've got huge net, and that's the only one that I work and hit the hip and set around runs and runs and runs. My boys can't even get on the tablet when they're on virtual for school or nothing.
I'm not sure yet for us, but I know it is being used in accounting in some places, but I'm not sure it would work where you live, but I would try that. It's a smaller investment, I think five or six hundred dollars, and then you're ready to go just equipment.
Girl Awards, that's what I'm saying. I mean, they brought the fiber up the main hall. And then Spectrum is up the girls. It ain't the twelve hundred feet in my house, I know, up in Frank Hall. No, down in Hall.
It varies by company.
Spectrum comes up the girl.
I'm not, I'm not sure what Spectrum dropped.
I've been pointing, and I was thinking about that was fifteen hundred feet that they would. Spectrum might be different.
Just give you, would you go talk to Neil Scotty?
Of course.
And before you go talk to Scotty, give me information and.
We have anyone else in the audience for public comments? None? Anybody online, Kenneth?
I've asked no one to respond.
Okay, there's no more public comments. Motion to close public comments. Second, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rye?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? And I'm a yes. Okay, moving on to number five, Jessica Savage, Secretary for PGBC Board of Directors, consider approving the following for the CAM.
Thank you all for giving us an opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about the CAM. We have a few different requests on the agenda. The first one is, well, I guess I should introduce myself for anyone who doesn't know me. I'm Jessica Savage. I'm the Secretary of the Theater Guild of Buchanan County, and this is Jody Reynolds. She's the President of the Theater Guild. She's also gonna be Vanna White for a moment. We have. The first request that we have is we have requested a fifteen thousand dollar donation to pay for some signage at the CAM. As you all probably know, we've served, we've served about five hundred to probably seven hundred and fifty kids since we've started doing the theater program at the CAM. We've made a ton of improvements to the building. We have received a lot of grant funding and we continue to do so, but we're still in desperate need of some signage. We've kind of put that to the back burner because other projects inside have taken precedence. And we now would like to get a lighted sign like this. These are some renderings that we had someone do for us to kind of show where we want to go with the building on the inside and the outside when our project is complete. So we want to get a lighted sign for, on, to put on the building. We also want to redo the spinning clock tower. If you guys know, the Coca-Cola bottling facility had that awesome spinning clock tower. We would like to redo that. And then Legacy Bank donated us their digital sign from the deal branch, but we're gonna have to redo the outside of that and the top of it with, you know, they have their Legacy Bank logo at the top. So we want to redo that and redo the coloring on it to match the coloring of our program.
Fifteen thousand to do all three things that you're talking about?
Um, no, no, it won't do all of it, but.
It's a good start.
We were, yeah, we're trying to be conservative in our request. But we definitely know it will pay for this sign and the top of the Legacy Bank sign.
Mr. Chairman, so two, real quick, Ms. Horn, can we have the fifteen thousand just put in the up and coming budget? I'm gonna make a motion, put fifteen thousand in the up and coming budget for this project.
Motion by Mr. Stiltner, second by Mr. King, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rye?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Brandon? Mr. Atkins? And I'm a yes.
And the second request that we have is we are asking for support from the county. I don't know if you guys remember, but we came back in the fall and asked for the county to support the Theater Guild applying for a million-dollar grant from the Industrial Revitalization Fund to finish out our project. We were not awarded that, the funding in the last cycle, but since then, we've taken other funds. We've made a lot of progress on the project. And we are going back to ask for four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars this time in a grant to finish out the, hopefully, the concession area. We would like to look like this. No. We were denied altogether. We've been, we've got a lot of support from Will Morfield to help us try to get, get it this time. He's been working closely, put us in contact with some additional grant writers that are gonna look over our our project. So I'm hoping that, you know, having put additional funding into it through other means, we have a lot of support coming in and lowering that amount request, but hopefully we'll get them this time.
Okay, so you just need a letter of support?
We just, and the, the funding has to come through the, we have to apply through the county's CAM system, so we just.
I'm gonna make that motion to approve the letter of support.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. We have a second, any discussion? Mr. Atkins, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Stiltner, Mr. Rye, Mr. King, Mr. Cooper, and I'm a yes.
I just want to say thanks, guys, for all the work that you guys do there. I know this crazy amount of work, but I, you know, I'm just saying so great for the community. I love it.
Appreciate it.
The third thing is consider approving a local certification form when you.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. And I think that is just basically the formality of creating the letter that just says that we can apply through the CAM system, and you guys have certified that we can apply through the CAMs.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rye? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? And I'm a yes.
As I will say, this is probably one of the best projects in, that I've seen brought to life in Buchanan County in many, many years.
I mean, they ain't not do nothing. They'll come out even more.
I can't take credit for. There's been a very, very large team.
There's a, there's a large team of people.
The amount of people that come through down there, there's plays, I mean, it's just unreal, and like the confidence it gives the kids, I mean, it's just, it's a great.
I've, I've heard nothing but good about it, so, great job.
Appreciate the support. Thank you.
We do like it when somebody else does the work on CAM.
Okay, moving on to number six, Jackie Rosenberger, Project Leader for Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, requests a letter of support for the wildlife crossing on the new road, Corridor Q at Southern Gate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all. It's, it's clear by looking at the agenda, I do not have time to go through everything I wanted to go through, so I'm gonna try to condense this into a couple minutes. And I have printouts of a PowerPoint that I have on this topic that, I've got eight copies, so I'm gonna try to spread it out as much as I can. But yes, so Corridor Q is what I wanted to discuss. I don't think I need to go into the benefits of the corridor for this community in terms of transportation and economy, and it's gonna be a real positive thing for this area. The only issue is that we have a significant number of elk that use the corridor area. We've got at least one hundred that consistently use that area, and we've got GPS data to kind of back that up. In fact, on these handouts I'll give you, I've got a map of GPS locations for female elk over a three-year period, and you really don't need to look at the line of the road. You can just follow their GPS points and know where the road is. So what's interesting is that the construction of the road has actually directly led to the geographic expansion of elk in this area. They are using it as an ease of travel, and they're eating right along the road. So I just wanted to kind of inform you guys about a study that I've been working on with VDOT, the Bristol Office of VDOT. I had actually presented to them in February or March of last year and presented this issue to them and asked if they would work with me on it, and they were all about it. In fact, they requested the Virginia Transportation Research Council, which is the research arm of VDOT, to get involved and do an official study to look at how do we mitigate elk and vehicle conflicts on this road. So we worked on that for a little less than a year, and we have research results, we have a draft report. Essentially, you know, I can go into more detail if you guys are interested, but we have ten locations, ideal locations, that we want to do wildlife crossings on, and those are overpasses or underpasses that get animals safely across the road. It's very commonplace out west, it's something that's just, you know, starting to take off here in the east, but it's really not something out of the ordinary if you just go to the western United States. And so wildlife crossings in conjunction with eight-foot-high wildlife fencing is the most effective way of practically eliminating wildlife vehicle conflicts and still promoting that habitat connectivity for wildlife. And so that's what our draft report has, that was the goal of our draft report. There's a tremendous amount of federal funding out there for projects like this. Now, I'm gonna give you a number, and you're probably gonna get sticker shock, but I'm gonna put it in a perspective here. So the Bristol Office, their engineers, they came out to the corridor and in addition to looking at GPS data for our elk and from a wildlife perspective, they looked at it from the engineering perspective, you know, where can we put these structures on the corridor, what are the most cost-effective locations, and they did a cost estimates at each location. So total for ten wildlife crossing structures, eight-foot wildlife fencing on the entire corridor, as well as just the long-term maintenance of all that stuff, all that stuff is fifty million dollars. Now, for perspective, that is only six percent of the entire budget to create that corridor. It's a eight hundred plus thou, or eight hundred plus million-dollar project. And we are not asking VDOT to pay anything for that. We are just asking that they try to apply for federal funding. Through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, Federal Act, there are literally billions of dollars for projects like this, and one in particular that we've identified requires that twenty-five percent of two billion dollars be used for Appalachian Development Highway System segments, which Corridor Q qualifies as. And because we are in a federally designated opportunity zone, we do not have to have a match. We can get it fully funded. And there are a couple of other benefits there, so I'm not gonna go into the other programs that are available for funding, but just know there is a tremendous amount of funding opportunities out there. The issue basically at this point is that the Bristol Office has worked very closely with us. We're all on board. We had a final review meeting scheduled for this report, February tenth, and VDOT leadership canceled our meeting three days before that and is now June fifth, and they have yet to let us know that we can reschedule it. To be honest with you, they do not seem to want to do anything about this issue and do not want the report to be published because then, you know, that'll kind of hold them to the fire. And again, we're not asking them to pay anything. We're just asking them to try. They really need to be the ones to apply for this, this federal funding. So there's, there's other things I could go into, and I'd be happy to if you guys are interested, but also please know that there is a tremendous amount of stakeholder support. We have a separate effort that created a webpage for this project. We have twenty-two organizations and entities that have supported our study, so this is something that people know about. People are expecting results from and expecting effort to be put towards it. It says on the agenda that I'm requesting a letter from you all. As an employee of a state agency, I cannot request that from you. So let the record reflect, I cannot request that you submit a letter to anyone, but I will say that if this at all interests you, I would be happy to give another presentation on it where I have more time. And if you ask me what you can do to help, I would be happy to give you suggestions. But I think it would be a really positive thing for this county, not only to make sure people aren't running into elk, but to help our elk with habitat connectivity. It's, it's pretty apparent that the elk mean a lot to the people in this community, and we definitely want to protect them. Not to mention that if we are successful in this project, this will be the first project of its sale in the eastern U.S., and that is a pretty big deal. And I guarantee you, people will come here to see these structures. It will be a, a, a very big deal. And again.
You're basically saying that they would, structure something that would force elk to go down an under, an underpass or something, instead of crossing the highway where they wouldn't get hit by a vehicle on this road.
Exactly. You basically would.
And why would VDOT, why would VDOT not apply for the grant would be my first question.
So they said they've had higher priorities in other parts of the states to apply for grants that, that they. Well, they are limited on the number of grants for each, the number of proposals that they can submit for a grant program any given year. And so it is a little bit competitive in terms of them submitting grants, but I will say, local governments can submit applications for this money as long as VDOT is willing to work with you and say, yeah, we'll help you on implementation of the project. So that's another potential way. So, yeah, like I said, I don't want to take up a ton of your time, but I would be happy to talk to you more about it if you guys are at all interested.
Corridor Q was changed a lot several years ago. It used to be strictly for the four-sixty corridor. And then Senator Bird died many years ago. They, the Congress got together and said, we're gonna change that, but now it's, I don't know who's eligible, it's very competitive. And if you don't have VDOT's support, it's gonna be pretty hard, and then probably Scotty knows more about it than I do. He, he deals with some, I think, but it's, it's different animal. There is a lot of money, but there are thirteen states used to be eligible. May all fifty be eligible now, I don't know. But when they made it to Virginia, the only place you used to be able to spend money was on four-sixty, complete four-sixty. But when they changed that, now they can spend it anywhere in Virginia. You know where the people in Virginia are gonna spend it. They're gonna spend it on the eastern Virginia, that's what's happened the last seven or eight years. Oh, no, it won't, but you have to have an applicant. They won't probably. They won't probably.
Probably eliminate it like they did the four-lane on 460 there, you know, or might get back to two-lane, but I believe it'd be cheaper to put up a big billboard and teach them the route. Elk. Yeah, I'm working. I just jumped in.
I'll, I'll just throw out there too, you know, we did a cost estimate on, you know, an elk crash with a vehicle and the cost estimate is $80,000. And that includes not only property damage, but you know, loss of quality of life, medical expenses, things like that. And so when you graph out, you know, the cost of one structure versus that, if one structure prevents two elk collisions in a given year, it will pay for itself with, with the life of the structure.
If they ever decided.
I've got multiple.
You were on that tour with us that we went on there, um.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever decided really where a location was or whatever? Have you already decided there?
Yep. Yeah, we've got the whole draft report set up. We just can't publish it until we're allowed to, but, but I've actually got a map of them, uh, in this. Yes, sir.
Chairman, if I may.
So, uh, I'll be happy to talk to you guys further.
Uh, would it be possible for us to just pass a letter of support to send to, uh, the Department of Wildlife and Resources, um, for them to pass on to, uh, VDOT? Or would, could we send it a letter of support directly to VDOT?
Well.
Without her requesting it. She hasn't requested anything.
Who's gonna be the applicant?
Foundation. The Elk Foundation. Yeah. Did you get with Leon? And, uh, can we do that? Can we go ahead and just make a motion and, and, uh, pass a letter of support for the Elk Foundation to? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure a nonprofit can apply for a federal, a federal, uh, grant program like this. It would have to be kind of a government agency, but, um.
We support it. They can apply for it. We have to support it, right?
Well, it'd be the other way around.
You would have to apply for it and then they'd support us.
Right, but at the end of the day, we still need VDOT to work with us and, uh, and, and, and if, if, if you're interested in writing a letter, I can give you contact information for the individuals you want to send it to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, yeah. Go get the application. Yeah, we either. So you said, you said a 401, I mean, 501(c)(3) can't. 501(c)(3) can't, Derek. Yes.
Mr. Brannan.
Mr. Atkins. I'm a yes.
We'll figure it out. Thank you.
Like to go ahead and do what you're gonna do. Good evening, gentlemen. Number one, it's blisteringly hot in here. Thanks for that. Why don't you turn up the heat?
That does not.
Thank you for that, Drew. But I, I, I wish, uh, I wish the air conditioning man. That's fine. I just, Mr. Horn.
We do every time, but I don't know what else to do. We've got turned on. We get 20, 30 people in here, it's gonna happen.
No, I, I, uh, I wish Jody and Jessica, actually, were still here. Um, of course, having grown up in this county, still paying taxes in this county, my, my father made a living at the old Coca-Cola plant and to see what they're doing with the CAM and that facility, uh, honestly, I think is one of the best examples of repurposing, uh, an old asset that, that I have ever seen here. So I think you guys are to be applauded for your support of that project. Uh, I was asked to appear tonight to discuss two specific things. Uh, one, the ongoing Route 460 cell tower development project and also the ongoing, um, body broadband expansion project that's impacting all four of our member counties, Buchanan, Dickinson, Russell, and Tassell. And just by the way, I have with me this evening, Mr. Tony Carter. He's the general manager for this region, uh, for Point Broadband, and correct me if I got your title. Okay, close enough. Um, I'll just roll through this, starting with the Route 460 update, uh, if that's okay. Um, several years ago, the Virginia Cultural Coalition, of which your planning district, Cumberland Plateau PDC, is a member, uh, constructed around a dozen new towers, uh, across the region. You might remember with private carrier cooperation, um, three new towers were built here in Buchanan County, if memory serves. One at Oakwood, one at Van Sant, and one at Southern Gap. Following that project, it was just to be candid with you, difficult to get the private carrier back to the table to discuss additional projects because we, we do have a declining population. And just from a business point of view, when they look at our demographics and our population, it doesn't always make a lot of sense. Um, but, um, after some persuasion, that, that carrier did agree to participate in a, in a new effort, um, to bring cell coverage to the approximately 17-mile, uh, section of Route 460 between Red Ash and, and Van Sant that currently has no service save for the area around Oakwood where the one single tower, uh, exists. But when that project is complete, it should, uh, according to that carrier's, uh, engineers, create a seamless ring of coverage, basically from Richlands through Van Sant on into Grundy, uh, eliminating that, that problem. Uh, the VCC, uh, secured a total of $2.00 million and, and change in project funding, uh, through several partners over the last couple of years, uh, for that effort. Uh, monies from the Appalachian Regional Commission, Virginia Energy, uh, Thompson Charitable, uh, some funds from VCTA and the VCC itself. Currently, the VCC holds options on all six sites that were necessary for this project. So we're talking about the construction of six new uh, towers along the highway there. We are currently waiting on surveys to be finalized for the private carrier's legal review. You all understand that, I'm sure. Once that process is complete, um, formal leases will be executed and two project RFPs will be issued by the VCC, one for, uh, engineer furnish and install services and one for project management services. So we're getting very close to issuing RFPs on this project. And of course, if you're familiar with any types of projects over the years, I know all of you are at, at the governmental level. Once we get to that point, you're, you're in a good place. And I think we're, we're almost there. For a variety of reasons, this project has not been, it's not been easy. The environmental assessment required by multiple funders, for one, has been a very long and arduous process, which I won't get into all that, but, um, you know, beyond that, it took considerable time to secure all six sites necessary and, and gain options on, on those sites just for the construction of the towers. We were waiting on one particular uh, property owner there for some, gosh, I think pushing, pushing nearly a year at one point. But we have options on all six now, so those RFPs will be issued this summer. And after that time and after we are under contract with, uh, two firms for, for that piece, those pieces of the work, the project pace, uh, you should see increase dramatically. So I, I'm not generally one to, to stand up here and, and give, uh, a timeline projections when shovels will actually be in the ground, but we are as close as we have ever been to actually kicking off construction on this project. I'm very hopeful that, that we'll see that this calendar year or early, early next calendar year. Just beyond that, just another quick note, uh, the VCC Board, uh, did, um, uh, did authorize us to begin the pursuit of a regional wireless needs assessment. Over the last few months, we all know even with projects like these, that deficiencies still exist, um, all, all throughout the coalfields. Your county, uh, the other counties in the planning district, the other neighboring planning districts across, across to the other side of the coalfield, we have many areas that are still uncovered. All of those challenges remain to bring a carrier to the table and, and convince them that it's worthwhile for them to serve that area. In any case, the VCC Board authorized us to pursue that, that regional study to identify and, and possibly rank areas with wireless deficiencies with an emphasis on things like economic development, tourism development, emergency services. We all know how important those things are. Funding for that study is already in place. It's being funded by the VCC itself as well as a little kicker from the, uh, Virginia Tobacco Commission. And we are finalizing an RFP for that effort, uh, now as well. And really, the main purpose that will serve is that we'll be able to use that document as, as justification uh, for future projects that, that illustrate that need. Take that, that study to funders and say, this, this is why this is necessary. Um, so we'll, we'll be kicking that off this, this summer as well. Um, I'll stop there on this point and just ask if there are any questions. I'll do my best to answer them.
Yes, um, you know, we can put up all cell towers we want, but last October, we had pretty basic cell service in accounting. We have pretty basic cell service in, uh, in Hurley. Even going to Pikeville, you have pretty basic cell service. And now, you know, we've got terrible cell service. So when's that gonna be resolved? Not only the government, the federal government required private carriers go from, uh, with a 3G to 5G. They were supposed to upgrade their towers. Um, I was told that come January, this would be corrected when I upgrade to a, uh, iPhone 14. This is, I mean, honestly, I would have much rather stayed at 3G service and had cell service than went through the upgrades that they're going through. My understanding is they're fighting over who uh, coverage areas or, do, do you know anything about any of that?
Not, not with any real specificity. Um, Mr. Atkins, unfortunately, the, the towers that, that we maintain and, and control, of course, are VCC-owned, um, and that, that, that involves some, oh, what, about, about a dozen that are owned and, and several others that are maintained by that organization, ones that are outside of that, not outside of that network, but outside of that ownership ring. You know, I, I really can't, uh, speak, um, intelligently about, about the ownership situation, like in the, in the Knox District with the towers that I, I know the ones you're referring to.
Well, in the Pikeville, I mean, I, I had good service on the Pikeville. You have to touch your phone off, pit on it, you know, put it on the air conditioner to cool it off and then cut it back on. They even work in Pikeville. It's just not a Grundy problem.
460 from Grundy to Van Sant has like zero bars.
I mean, there's good news. My, my.
You know, all the way up through there.
She's gonna fix all this. I would vote for her if she did, but we all know that in reality, speaks in them, but that's not the situation. What is this solution to that? How can, do we need to send a letter to our state senators? I think, look, you know, we think they are only in the.
I think we already sent a letter to Verizon.
We, we did.
Yeah.
But, you know, the letter hasn't been sent, but I make a motion. Correct. We gotta respond to them. Maybe we should send another letter and direct it to Mark Warren and, and, uh, Jim Kane and say, look, you know, this is a federal issue. You didn't do the letter. I hope the letter. So should we just send a letter directed Mark Warren, Jim Kane and say, hey, you know, we're direct, we need something. And this, this is not a Grundy problem. Brutal babies, that guy, leave that in the room.
I go to Pikeville several days a week. Their cell service is not any better than ours. It, it's not a Buchanan County issue, so you know what? I just feel like we need to send a letter. If there's no objection from the board, we need to send a letter to Mark Warren, Jim Kane and, and, uh, uh, Morgan Griffith and say, look, you know, you all need to address this. This is not a supervisor issue. Pam can campaign on it all she wants. It's embarrassing. But it's on a federal level, you know, they need to address it. They require cell companies to go with 5G. They need to address the issue. Do they not? Anybody object to them sending a, a letter to those folks? And just ask them for this to be resolved.
Uh, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Atkins. I, I was in a meeting just, uh, just last week, someone complaining about the tower here, here in downtown Grundy. Uh, I, I, I know that, I know it's an issue. At the end of the day, it's, it's up to the, uh, the operator of that tower and, and the, uh, private carriers attach that tower to make sure that they're, they're ready for the new tech. And, and until that, until that happens, I, I don't know the story.
Cell towers being, that's like mainstream and everybody, you know, everybody uses these like, I mean, and they don't let tech before it's time and they, you know, shut down massive areas of the county. I mean, that, that's bad, dangerous in my opinion.
Well, outside of this, uh, I believe it's taken something like 12 years in order to get those cell towers started there from Shortscap to Van Sant. Now, if we can pinpoint from most towers there left and right, we might be able to get more service there. But he's talking about bars, uh, Van Sant. We got one up at Van Sant on the mountain there. I'm three miles away from it there. And cannot get one bar. And I said that a meeting of them, it looks like with the technology they've come up with, that we should be able to divert cars. They say, ah, they don't go down, but some way or another, they should figure out how we can supply cell service to everybody. Now, I know this. We've got a cell phone and we got a landline. Now, if they give everybody a cell phone service there, what are they gonna do? They're gonna discontinue one. Instead of paying two bills, they'll only be paying one. You understand what I'm talking about there? And I feel like it's all about money on everything that we get down there. Now, I believe the landline is $112,000, sir. And then the cell phone is another 50. So if we would get cell, I mean, get our cell service, we wouldn't need the land service there. So I'll shut up on that, but Scotty, I really do hope we start pretty soon on constructing those towers and see from there what kind of service we got and see where we need to go, you know, on that.
Every now and then I've got cell phone service. Every now and then I've got internet. Who controls this? Is the internet available from different companies? A cell phone service available from different companies or what? What have you got?
Yeah, Carol, it's, it's, excuse me, Mr. Brannan, it's, it's, it is a complicated issue. It, it depends on, on the private carrier that's attached to that specific tower, whether that be, I'm, I'm just using various ones for, for uh, conversation sake, whether that's, that carrier is Verizon, whether it's AT&amp;T. Um, what was the group out of Eastern Kentucky that had a few around here? Appalachian Wireless, thank you. Um, you know, it, 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 it just depends on the attachment to that tower, uh, Mr. Brown. So without, you know, most towers, depending on the design of a tower, you can have multiple attachments. It depends on the size and, and the design of the tower. That's always better. And you can have multiple attachments and have multiple options, just like if you live in an area where you have multiple internet providers or whatever the case may be, cable, cable TV. Um, but we all know, you know, in this area, that's, that's, that's a rare thing.
The cell phone is in an area that's given to certain phone companies. Is that correct? Is that?
Given to certain phone companies?
Yeah. Verizon, uh, uh, I understand from where I live, all I can get is Verizon cell phones. Is that correct?
My knowledge, Mr. Brannan, that's, that's directly relative to to the attached carrier on, on your nearest tower. I, I don't believe there's county ordinance or, or, uh, state law that prohibits, um, I want you to consider an overbuild on, on, on the fiber internet side for, for cell coverage. You know, you can have multiple, um, carriers on an individual. You know, you can have multiple carriers on an individual tower, as far as I know, in most cases. I don't believe there's anything that would prevent that from happening.
You've got a representative support.
Correct.
That is another word, I did, I said three miles upstate, but it's right down below here. Do you think we'll be able?
Service there? What, they'd be able to do that?
The tower?
No, the internet.
Oh, I meant, I'm sorry, Mr. Branham, I misunderstood you. Yes, yeah, absolutely. I know, I have an update on that as well. That's a little more involved. I know you have a huge agenda, so I'll try to get through this briefly. But does anyone have any other questions on the Route 460 project before I move on? Okay, well, concerning our broadband efforts, as you all know, the Cumberland Plateau Company kicked off a project about a year and a half ago, eighteen, twenty months ago or so, to bring high-speed broadband to the vast majority of the four county districts, specifically neighborhoods that are unserved or underserved currently by a high-speed provider. And we're doing that in cooperation with our private partner, CPC's private partner being Point Broadband, of course. That work was funded, just for a little background, that work was funded from two awards in the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, which is a state program administered by DHCD, for a total of fifty-three million dollars in state grant funds, also representing a seventeen point five million dollar investment by Point Broadband and private capital, a one point four million dollar investment by the Cumberland Plateau Company as well, for a total investment of seventy-two million dollars. And of course, all of that work and all of that funding package that will fund all of that work comes at a cost of absolutely nothing to our member counties, including Buchanan County. In total, that project will reach nearly fifteen thousand unserved or underserved homes in the four county area when it's complete by the end of 2024. And as of today, the progress on that project, the entire project, is at roughly thirty-four percent complete with more than a year and a half to go, so we feel good about still being able to hit that target of serving all of those unserved homes by the end of next calendar year. Just a few specific little notes here on some Buchanan County areas that I'm aware are currently active. And I'll pitch to Mr. Carter here to fill in any gaps that I overlooked. The Bull Mountain slash Carmen area here in Buchanan County, design and engineering is complete there with construction to begin as soon as a variety of pole permits are approved and they work through that process. Patterson is on the upcoming schedule as well. Field engineering is actively underway there. Also, a section of Popper Creek where field engineering is also underway. Couple other areas as well that are upcoming, not currently active, but are upcoming. Certain offshoots of the Slate Creek area, Mr. Branham. I just got it down a couple that I personally am aware of because I've had communications with residents in those areas over the past few months. Wusley Branch, Dry Tripe Road, others in those areas that I know you're familiar with. Some additional coverage in the Hurley area as well, Mr. Atkins, of course, as you alluded to earlier. The county projects a couple of years ago or maybe three years ago now, time gets away, that covered, oh, I don't know if Tony, you recall what that number is, covered probably forty-five or fifty homes in the Straight Fork area there from the head, excuse me, from the mouth on up. There will be additional coverage there on Straight Fork that follows that 2020 work and some offshoot areas, offshoot roads from that neighborhood as well. Sparrow Road I know is intended to be covered. There are some other areas too. I'll just stop and pause there for a moment. Does anyone have any question? I know that's a lot of information to consume in a short amount of time, but I'm trying to give you a solid update on kind of where we are and just let you know that that effort and that project is still ongoing, it's still moving. You know, just like any other project, you know, this is a construction project. We're dealing with weather and contractors and seeking permits for railroad crossings and pole attachments to Verizon poles and on down the line. So things do get in the way, there are obstacles. We're still in a good place, although I know, I was talking to Mr. Cooper before the meeting got underway. You guys have done a tremendous job over the last few years extending high-speed internet across this county. Even prior to the start of these body projects, I was just going through my notes earlier today. Through county dollars, you funded the construction of more than twenty-two hundred new passings in the county, out of county coffers over the last few years. And that's for a county of this size, of our size, and this population and the number of households that are here. That's actually a very large number. That's across a variety of providers, not just Point Broadband, of course. But you're really to be applauded for having that vision to do that when you had the opportunity to do so. But we know there are still gaps there that we're working to fill. And when you see all of the positive developments happening around you, your neighbors, other parts of the county. Still, I understand when you're one of the ones still waiting on that service to come by your home, it's very frustrating. But I assure you, we are working on that. And I'll pitch to Mr. Carter in a moment if you have any specific neighborhood oriented questions that one of us can possibly answer about this project.
I'll go first, Scotty, since I was the one to ask you to come and give these updates, specifically talking about Patterson and clearly, I don't know if we made a mistake or who made a mistake there, but Patterson been one of the large projects, I think about a hundred and seven homes up there was gonna be serviced. And we knew that it was covered under the Vatty Fund. So we, instead of paying for that project twice, we moved on to do other projects in the county. But had we known it was gonna take so long, maybe we would have did something different, I don't know, because we keep hearing what's on the list, it's coming or we're doing this and we're doing this. That's very hard to, well, I can't answer the question and, you know, it's very hard to answer those questions when you don't know. Since I turn people to you guys to help me out because I don't have any answers, you know? And answers I get are definitely not satisfying to people. Just, and it's a good project, I mean, there's a lot of homes up there, you're gonna get a lot of bang for your buck when you spend the money to go in there, being a hundred and some homes. Because I know we did less areas, less people, less coverage, we did those, you know? These people sitting there kind of foaming at the mouth, if you will, and they need it, like most people need it. Because we all know now that internet's not a luxury anymore, it's a necessity, it's a way of life. I mean, that's how you function, that's how you do business, that's how we live. It's almost, it's always getting to the point, it's like water, man. We got the habit to conduct our lives, basically.
It is, it is, it is the new critical infrastructure, for sure.
And I thank you for the update, but still, yeah, it didn't answer any questions as far as, you know, and people want that definitive, it's gonna be here in two months and three days and twenty-one hours, you know?
Well, you know, I assure you, Mr. Cooper, if I had that direct answer for you tonight that it was going to be here September thirtieth or whatever, it would have been the first thing out of my mouth. But it probably would be beneficial if, let me give Mr. Carter this chance to kind of update you guys on maybe one of, a couple of the obstacles that we face and are working through successfully to get to places like Patterson as soon as we possibly can.
Will you step aside, just wait a second? You give us some numbers here and you're looking for fifteen thousand people in coverage and you're thirty-four percent complete and we're into the 2023 year, halfway into it. And when you're saying we're gonna be complete by 2024, there's no way, man. There's no way you're gonna hit that target, it ain't happening. Well, based on the progress that I've seen so far and the way that you guys move, you ain't doing it. It ain't gonna happen.
I've been with the family for about four months now, so, and I'm excited to be here because of all the buildings going on. What the obstacle that has been kind of slowing this area down has been the permitting process. And some of the things that we've done now, we've been working with Verizon on that, and we're doing a lot of the engineering for them. So when Scotty talks about engineering, instead of giving them, hey, we wanna be on this pole, you go out, tell us how tall it is, tell us what you gotta move, tell if it needs to be replaced, we're doing that for them. So we're taking that timeline, we're moving it in. As far as building, right now, we're also building, if we'd had the permits here like we done, we'd have been pretty close to done. For example, when we have over, almost a hundred crews working right now, working and constructing in Smith County and other counties where we don't have that obstacle. But once that obstacle is removed, you're gonna see all those crews over here. And we feel very confident that we can get very close to completing on that. And I'm like, once we get the permitting and we can open up that whole gamut that we can do. Right now, in this area, a lot of times too, with the permitting, one pulls on by the power company, the next one's Verizon, the next one's Power Company. So it gets a little confusing, so it's hard to get through all those permitting processes. But Verizon's been working with us and they brought in extra, their issue was staffing, you know? And so they brought in more staffing, we're doing our part to make it go faster. And then, then, you know, at some point, we're hoping that they'll let us go ahead and just go and then do a post-inspection process. That's what they did, like the pole owners did in Smith County. They said, just go ahead and build and then we'll go behind you and fix everything, any safety issues we cover. So that's kind of the dilemma we're in here, but it's starting to break loose now. We're starting to get to the point where we're gonna be able to start bringing in crews here. Probably July, I think, will be about when you have enough permits in an area to bring in a crew. So, you know, we feel confident if it keeps going like that, we'll be able to get through these camps.
You made a good point.
Poked my attention. You said, once you get enough permits in, you're gonna bring a crew in?
Crews, I mean, what that means is, for example, you know.
I think I know what you mean.
Yeah, I mean crews, I mean a bunch of crews. And what we gotta do is to do that, we gotta have all the area ready. A lot of times contractor crews won't come and do one small area and then leave, one small area and leave. They'll set up base, they'll set up shop and they'll take out the whole camp. And that's kind of what we're shooting for, to be able to do that. If we can get partially away.
You know what my question is?
Yeah, okay.
If, let's say you get a section that's really far behind on getting finished. So we're not gonna have to wait on that.
No, no, we'll bring in crews if sections are ready. But I'm talking about, you know, if there's gaps in between and all the pole permits and all of a sudden when they all get there, then that's when we bring crews. If you've got a permit that's keeping you from finishing an area, right, that's what I mean by that.
And so. Do you guys have a map of these fifteen thousand? You have a map of?
We have a map that shows on the, on our construction progress on our Point Broadband's location. It shows a lot of the areas that we're looking at and we're gonna be building and setting. So if you look on that and you go into.
How do you see that?
It's on the, I wish I could pull it up, you guys were talking about cell service, I was trying to pull it up on my phone and I couldn't. Yeah, I couldn't pull it up, but if you go in there and there's a section that says information and you see a construction and it'll have a map, an interactive map on what homes, you can zoom down, see what homes are covered by the grant and everything and where we're at, where we're getting ready to go. So it's on the website.
Scotty's question back to you, I know you and I talked and the way this stuff runs is very frustrating what we deal with because there was no rhyme or reason why you guys would do so far. I guess you just ran out of money or whatever, but you would stop here and then there's other people to see that. They're watching you quit and they're waiting on their turn, you know?
Yeah, but sometimes some of that's permit, some of that is, you know, those addresses may not have been concluded in the grant. A lot of that area that they had to pull out here, from what I understand, you know, I've been with them for months, what they explained to me was they had to go so far and then they didn't have the permits to go any further and they had to pull out. And that's a lot of it, from what I've read and seen, looking back at all the notes and the construction.
And I know sometimes the electrical, when you follow the electrical poles, you know, sometimes when you can, electricity stops here and it runs a different way, you know, you can see it over there, it comes differently, sometimes that happens, I know that's happened.
Yeah, we follow, we follow power lines.
The, Scotty, the brown, on top of the ridges there, the Brown Mountain area, Chicken Ridge area, stuff that runs along that Buchanan County, McDowell County, Taville County line running up through there, is that in this fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I'm fine to work through, oh, you're fine, yeah. Mr. Cooper, can you, do you think you could send me just one physical address for reference for me to take a closer?
What address?
I'm three six one, okay. I'm gonna make a note of that now. And what I'm doing right now, if you have a question about any particular area in your district, you've gotten a call from a constituent and you just wanna know, is it included in this project, is it not? Is there a timeframe, timeline, whatever? Please feel free to shoot that to me. I can't answer that question off the top of, I just don't have that information, that level of information in front of me, but I can find that out, Mr. Cooper.
This interactive map that you're talking about, that you're working on, when this gets activated and we're in, it'd be something good if you could share it with us monthly that we could have here and maybe talk about and say, okay, you've covered this much, this much to go and this area, kind of geographically where we're working at and where we're planning to be working at.
Yeah, we definitely, we think the timing of the permits, like I said, around the July time period, we could start actually physically seeing a bunch of crews in here. So then we can start being very active on that area.
Answer to everybody's question who needs internet is the consensus so far is, man, well, we'll get it, we'll get to it, it's on the list, you know? And I can understand the frustration.
Oh, I'm sure, I understand too.
Because like I said, it's, we're to the point now, it's definitely a necessity, no longer luxury anymore. It's, you know, as Tim mentioned, that you got, you know, all the kids and that school's changed so much now and everybody's got a habit, you know? And even down to, you know, I've had family members and friends who have these, I guess these things in their heart and they download and they can send messages to their doctor, you know, without having to drive to King's Ford, big deal. You know, those people need internet.
Yeah, we, you know, in the areas that we build, we talk to people all the time and says, probably my grandkids will come visit me because they have internet and then go to school and so I understand that thing. One thing I do wanna mention, I heard a conversation going on earlier, this one gentleman who's trying to get, there's a government program called LECAP, it's a line extension program. Now, you know how we go up to fifteen hundred feet? If somebody needs to go further than that, they can fill out and have their information online with the government, with the state. And they will send us a notice and say, hey, this person is beyond your footprint, what's it cost to get to them? We'll give them an estimate and they'll pay for it. So if he's like, LECAP, L-E-C-A-P, Line Extension Connection, yeah, and it's with the state. If that's the name of it, LECAP with the state, yeah. Well, no, it's just, it's the program underneath the state of Virginia. If you go LECAP, State of Virginia, you'll see it. Line Extension Connectivity Assistance Program.
I need to, can you make sure you get that in the papers?
And what that does is, and we've seen that, they pay for it, they pay for people that are past the limit. You know, fiber goes a lot further than the traditional coax like what Charter would have. That's why it was so expensive for him, but they will, you know, there's qualifications to do, but they'll, we've seen them pay for people to get extensions like to go in there and get services to a home. So that's just wanting to bring that up, I heard that conversation.
I'll take you back on that one point too, and we'll try to get out of your hair if you have any other questions. But that fifteen thousand passings, that number, Mr. Cooper, those are physical addresses, those are largely households. Most of them are households, so you multiply that by the national average for occupants of a single dwelling, two point four, two point five, whatever that number is now, you're really talking about a third of the population of the entire four county district. It's an enormous, enormous project. Our board, the CPC board, of course, you're familiar with. We've been given direction by that board to utilize this partnership to make sure eventually that every home that desires a high-speed internet connection in our four counties gets one at some point as quickly as we can. The CPC is a fifty percent owner in this network that we're actively expanding. We receive a small but meaningful percentage of those gross revenues and with those revenues, we do things like reinvest it back into our counties. The VEC Call Center project here in Buchanan County was a recipient of those funds that were derived from revenues from this system that have gone back into your county to directly benefit job creation. And in the future, when these body projects have concluded, the very few homes that remain without high-speed internet in this county and in all four of our counties, with those revenues, we are committed to extending service to them. So we look at this as an extinguishing problem. And I realize, you know, I wish, I truly wish I could snap my fingers and connect everyone today, I truly do. But we are getting there. But we, we are getting there and we will get there.
Let me ask you this question. I, I hate, Holacre Branch, Holacre Branch is where Coronado Coal has their new portal that they go into. And I know that they have high-speed internet to their office up there, to their, their, their place of, of work. And it's probably, it's probably point broadband. You guys probably ran it up there too then, specifically for those guys. And if you did, why can't we piggyback off of them? Got just a few homes up there in the head of that isle, spectrum comes up so far. You ran it to Coronado. We need to get, we need to get those people in Holacre Branch. There's just a few people in the head of that isle, and that spectrum just, they didn't, they didn't wanna play ball with us, so you acted like idiots and wanted to charge us a bunch of money and then get greedy. And you guys, we appreciate you wanting to help us out because it showed what y'all did. But, you know, there, we need, if it's there, and those people, that's why these people see this frustration. They're like, well, no, it's here because they got it, and I know they got it. Because they're running major business up there. They gotta have, they gotta have it. Can you check on Holacre Branch?
Absolutely.
Hey, real quick, you touched on the call center?
Yes.
Do you, do you know how many jobs that that has created up there?
I hate to speak on the record without, kind of out of, out of the loop on that now, Craig, but I, I think that at the time, they were employing, I don't know if Mr. Horn remembers this, seventy here at this location. I believe at one point, they got up to more than two, two hundred at the, at the call center location at Southern Gap. That was at least what was told to me. I'm not sure they're leveled now, but it was, it was a significant project for the county for, by, by any, by any method. Project occurred in late twenty twenty, if, if my memory's correct. Yeah. Yeah. The jobs, they are. That, that was, that was a good, that was good luck for the county. It was a good project. Still a good project.
Can you follow up with, can you, can you guys follow up with us in a month? Let, let, and give us if it's, if it's a letter, if it's a phone call to Craig or somebody here in this office, and let us know where you're at on, on what y'all got going on. Like to do that about every month.
Oh, no, no problem whatsoever. And do keep in mind, who are these gentlemen, said on our executive board, Mr. Hess and Mr. Rice. They, they receive and hear these updates every single month as well.
Even if it's on, even if you can't make it here, we can put you on Zoom, we put them on again. Let's get that on the gym every month going forward through this project and see what they, what they got going on. Just ask that question. If it's just a real brief update of saying, hey, this is where it is. Just something like that, you know, you guys don't have to necessarily be here, but be able to speak to you.
Scotty, I was just gonna say that. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, you know, like you said, Roger and Tim both on that board. I was on there for about a year and just kind of get this solid tip of the iceberg on the problems that can come up with like that four sixty project for those cell towers. I know Roger's been a proponent of that for twelve, fifteen years. And I mean, that's something we've been looking to do probably since the nineties to cover that area. And I, I personally appreciate all the work y'all have done on that. I know the whole county will benefit when we've got solid cell power coverage from there. And he's talking about the monies that we used in twenty twenty. Yeah, I, I, I think at one point the number was four hundred or so passings that we've gotten just in the Prater District. I know you said twenty-two hundred or something.
County, countywide, again, soft number around twenty-two hundred. And that's, that's, that's a, a few different providers' points I go, I believe, in the primary two.
Somewhere near what the body project is, but still is successful.
On a single county level, you know, those, those fifteen thousand passings were roughly fifteen thousand passings we're talking about. That's, that's on a four county regional level. That is a regional project. You, you look at it just through the, through the, through the lens of just Buchanan County, twenty-two hundred homes, that's, that's a huge percentage of homes in this county.
I live in a little place called Pilgrim's Knob. Pilgrim's Knob. If you, when you do your cell towers and you aim them all towards four sixty, remember the other side of the ridge called Pilgrim's Knob.
True. I will say that when this thing first started and we got the federal money, we chose to put all of our money into rubbing. And oh, tremendously. For those who are still waiting, you know, I apologize, but I mean, right here are two people standing. They'll tell you that I'm, I call multiple calls a week trying to get one last project.
Don't use past tense.
We spoke this morning, Craig.
I believe we did.
I need, Rock Lake District has really, they've benefited from this because we've got somewhere between five and six hundred passes homes covered with broadband, and that's with pulling. And so, you know, the Home Creek project was huge. So, you know, that was just a huge project. And, and, you know, before this came along, we got from below Big Rock State Line, Conaway. Then we got Dealport. So we, we've worked pretty good. We've got a lot of things accomplished, but like I said, just need one more.
So, point. And, but I like to pat, I go on the back because I go, especially in my area. You know, they're, they're putting in stuff left and right. They just finished at Boyd Ridge. Most of it now, I think, are going to Indian Creek, and, you know, those guys are being great over in my area.
Yeah, I've worked a lot. Yeah, we have some good, we have some good partners around Mr. Hess that have benefited.
I know that a lot of people would rather have service broadband as they would clean drinking water. You know, that's how much of the priority they are on it there. And I don't know. Hopefully, we'll get it there, but it's pretty soon, like running water there. We'll, we'll eventually get it there, but it ain't gonna happen overnight.
Thank you all for hosting us. Do you have any other questions for us?
Thank you, Scotty. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Scotty. Appreciate y'all coming. Okay, let's, we were way behind on two public hearings here. Let's go to number nine. Our public hearing at six fifteen, here public comments regarding the revisions to the Buchanan County Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance as mandated by Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. Open her up, Kena. Anybody here in the audience for the public hearing on this, this item? Anyone online, Kena? This is for the, the, the soil erosion and sediment control.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion to close public hearing in a second. Any discussion? Here none, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King? Mr. Rice? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? Mr. Atkins is out of the room, and I'm a yes. Okay, let's move far well to number ten. Consider approving a Buchanan County Virginia Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
This is Brannum? I'm a yes. Okay, we'll go on to number eleven real quick. Public hearings, here public comments regarding an amendment to the Small Purchase Procurement Ordinance, County Code Section sixteen dash four three, sixteen dash four five, and section, section sixteen dash four seven through sixteen dash fifty. Yeah. Public hearing is open. No one in the audience? Anyone online, Kena?
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rice? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes. Okay, consider adopting, number twelve, consider adopting the Small Purchase Procurement Ordinance, County Code Section sixteen dash four three, sixteen dash four five, and section sixteen dash four seven through sixteen dash fifty. Second, Mr. Brannum? Any discussion? Here none, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes. Okay, let's run back up here to number seven.
Same save time, I'll make a motion to give Sandy two hundred and sixty dollars, time seven. That's what we've done every year since I've been here, basically. Two hundred and sixty dollars per supervisor. That comes to eighteen. Yeah, I knew it'd been. I knew I'd done, we'd done it.
But I do appreciate it very, very much.
Yeah, save you the walk up. Yeah. Motion going to take.
Motion with, second, Mr. King, any discussion? Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Terry Colley, the resident.
Yeah, I'll see what I thought.
We put it in there.
Okay.
Terry, I have a question about that. We've got money in the budget, but.
First of all, I did get a vet to come into the channel. Crab Rocker Bickering Services wasn't done it last time, it's coming back this time to do it. And, you know, one thing I like to do is make it, we, we appropriate the money for this rabies vaccine, but it all goes towards rabies vaccine, that's what they've been in for to show. We didn't do that last time.
Second. There's a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any discussion? Here none, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Rabies.
Yes, Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Brannum? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thing, only thing is, I want to, how much are you equalling it? How much will be appropriated for?
I'm so.
Fifteen hundred? A year, fifteen hundred?
Thank you, Terry. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to number thirteen, Marcus Stiltner.
Somebody wait, Marcus.
Co-Hall Road Engineer.
Rebecca Yana.
Great. Did we put five percent or seven percent in the budget for the PSA?
Off, off to me, he's seen his budget.
Man, I, man, I feel like a woman.
That we didn't, he didn't.
Sing it, Marcus. Sing it, Marcus. Sing it for us. We're on item thirteen. We'll fix it later. Item thirteen.
Item number thirteen.
Item thirteen, I'd like the board to consider approving item thirteen, A, B, C, and D. Consider making a motion, approving a motion to approve these invoices. This will finish up the PSA appropriation for twenty, two, two twenty three. We need to do these individually or I'll, I'll have some.
These individually. That's what I thought.
I thought we done them individually.
Identified by the, by A, B, C. You identify it that way, they. We have a second. Second, Mr. Cooper, any discussion? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Rice? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm gonna make a motion that when we, whatever's left in this district counts at Co-Hall Road, I haven't seen used this thing for years, and we roll over anywhere, we count part July third. You know, they can just, we send up the, re-appropriate whatever. Co-Hall works, Craig. But they've done, in my district, we've had their plug.
We have, we have never done.
We've never done it, and we've never had to plug. So is it private, my district, company get the work done, and they, or Carols? Or anybody else? It's just a lot of it. That's a lot of money that somebody need to have done.
Actually, I didn't ask you. Do you have the balances?
I wanna know if it's been done before, because I'm gonna tell you, I, I, I just don't. It's never been done before. But, you know, like I explained, the.
Well, you may get your work done, or you just, you dish, you're held out because you don't have the contracts out there. I know Trey, that I, you can notice, because Roger said that, so right here in the road.
Oval, out of the two point one million original county road maintenance preparation, we have one million and ninety-eight thousand left. But we've also done over seven hundred thousand dollars worth of work in the Whitewood flood.
On a candidate pool?
No, it's same, no.
You know, you're, you're very limited to, to the contractors and stuff that you use, you know? When the appropriation, two point one appropriation was available July the one, July twelfth, we had the Whitewood flood. You know, we, we've exhausted all their efforts in, in Whitewood, this one river for eight months. And we're just now getting back into the.
You said you had a million dollars left over, but Whitewood cost you seven hundred thousand.
We're, we're talking about the three hundred thousand that.
Ask how much money was left in the. All right, you wanna know the exact number?
Wait, wait, so Craig understands, you're talking about three hundred thousand that was appropriated. Time seven is two point one million, and we've got a million of that hasn't been spent, is that correct? That, that is what he's saying. He went by district because mine's the highest. That's the problem.
Mr. Atkins, you confused everybody, including me, when he said Whitewood flood. He said, the reason we didn't get the work done was because of Whitewood flood.
The two point one appropriation was available July the first. That was for county road maintenance, like you do every year. All right, July the twelfth, we had a flood. Where the contractor that we have with K and K Contract, he got pulled off of the county roads, and he started working Whitewood flood. He worked there for six to eight months.
No, I'm interrupting one second here. And that is exactly what need to happen. Because I got flooded, I know how it feels. Whitewood got flooded. I got out of ICU on Thursday and went over on Saturday and helped Jeff get food out and wasn't able to get in and out of the side by side. I thought I was gonna pass out. They needed help. And now what I need here tonight is help getting my money re-appropriated where my district gets their fair amount of money to, I mean, because the roads are in crappy condition. You can't just say, Trey, hey, man, you was last on the list, dude, you, you just, hurt is not important. We're not gonna let you have your money. You're not getting your road paved, you're not getting your guardrails up, you're not getting your ditch work done because we had to work in Whitewood. Whitewood needed help. They were in the stress. That's over. Now it's time to do some work in Hurley. We can't get the bills turned in in June because the deadline's up. But we're gonna do that work in July and August and September. But I've gotta have my money. Or my district's getting behind. Carls District's gonna get behind. He's one of the other ones that's got a high amount that ain't been done. I mean, I'm, he, I want all of it read out. What's left in each county?
South Grunde, one hundred and sixty-one thousand and change. I don't believe I need to go down to specific.
Roger's less than a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
North Grunde, a hundred and thirteen thousand eight eighty. Knox, two oh four, two forty. Rock Lake, fifty-six thousand eight fifty-nine. Garden, two fourteen, five sixty-three. Hurricane, two fifty-seven, two fifty-four.
Hang on, you're gonna wait this place.
And the town is two fifty-seven, two fifty-three. And honestly, if anybody has any legit gripe and needs to be tuned, just, just don't set up.
What's my sniffer?
Prater, ninety thousand seven seventy-five. Okay, but how much of mine went just three weeks ago or, or two weeks ago or getting done now?
But keep in mind, you know, we can't go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Once you get to the district, we need to stay right there, you get done.
I'm fine with it.
Right now, we're working.
But I mean, I'm getting mine with VDOT overlay. It's not even county roads, it's VDOT overlay. That's where the biggest bulk of mine went.
I actually didn't know you had gotten, I, I don't care. What I'm saying is, all seven districts, I'm not pointing anybody out. All seven districts need to be able to use this money after July the first because we didn't get any work done this year.
Happens to them, yeah.
It goes back in the account. We lose it. Like we do everything else.
This year, we will have three hundred and fifty for each district.
Okay, we went up fifty thousand, so what you're saying is, Trey, give two hundred and forty thousand up, and we're gonna give you fifty extra that I made the motion on because the roads are in pissy conditions to start with.
So you're gonna have a half a million, you're gonna have a half a million from July first. How much, when I was on the Co-Hall Road, how much did we get each year? One fifty.
You don't understand.
I'm understanding.
Oh, two year period, a two year period.
Thousand and nobody ever.
A two year period, two year period, if we got three hundred thousand each year, six hundred thousand, whether you spend it all in one month or twenty four months, you get six hundred thousand dollars.
That's an ungodly amount.
Trey, Trey does have a point, I mean, because you spent.
My, my argument with Trey is, is if you put eight hundred thousand dollars per district, you ain't gonna do it with a spin.
Well, Craig probably, maybe that's what we need to do, because we're not getting our work done.
There was a lot of work that did not get done because of two floods, basically.
Two floods back to back.
There was a lot of work.
Out of back control. You know. There's not, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work to do in a district.
I can spend three hundred and fifty thousand easy.
Oh, I could.
My roads are in.
Let me ask.
I mean, everybody was happy when we was getting.
I got love, the amount of money each one gets, uh, now, for years, uh. Um, my district, uh. You know, we're supposed to get the same amount of money. Yeah, if we don't get the work done, does that money carry over? No. And so I've lost.
You've lost it, and I've lost it, now what's the difference in us rolling the coal road money over, or rolling our highway, street, and bridge money over, what's the difference? We re-appropriate it, what, what we're doing rolling over.
Money in the budget.
We can sugarcoat it and say it however you need to say it, make it legal, that's exactly what we're doing, we're appropriating the money that we do not use this fiscal year, and it starts over July the first. Whether it be coal road, whether it be parking wreck, whether it be part development, whether it be any of these other accounts we got, we keep our money, we got a two, over a two million dollar line item for that, because we re-appropriate. We haven't, because we've never had a problem like this before, I'm not gonna sit here, I'll make a motion until I turn blue in the face. Listen, Roger's gonna give up, uh, where you at here, Roger, a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars worth of work. That should have been done this year.
He has for years.
He shouldn't have either year.
He never spent all this money, because he's got a half of the road that nobody else has got.
I got one question, Lee, is it legal, hell, I know the answer, all we have to do is put this amount. Do an appropriation in the coal road and correct it. Period. We can sugarcoat this any way we want, we're not getting the work done, we're gonna let our roads be, uh, in piss poor shape.
July first, you have three hundred thousand dollars.
Hey Craig, Craig, you're down to fifty six thousand dollars, of course you don't have a complaint. You're in Knox District right now working, and where's that money gonna be billed from, because the billing is over, what, the fifteenth of the month? And let's say you spend all my money, is it fair for Roger to lose a hundred and sixty one thousand, or for Garden District, Garden District, two hundred and fourteen thousand?
No, no, don't go Garden District here, because we work twenty five roads. So I'm sure he's not complaining. And I say, as the same thing applies to you for the, uh, getting four.
It's not fair, your county roads that should have been paid or need paid.
What happens if you don't get your money though, will be like. Four lane and four sixty. When it gets to us, they don't have the money to do it, now, so they go to two lane, three lanes, I'm already, that's the reason why. I gripe about. At Craig over money there, or whatever there, because I know for years, uh. My district, uh, I don't think we've got that much work, uh, on each year of there.
I feel like you've gotten what is needed, so that.
Please, would you want to say something?
The point I wanted to make is ultimately what Mr. Atkins is suggesting is an amendment to the twenty three, twenty four coal road plan, and that's.
Sure, put it on.
Hold it, and that's gonna take the coal road committee to, to vote on it as well, what I would suggest. Is Marcus, consider a coal road committee in July, have a coal road committee consider this issue, if they vote to do it, then it comes back to the board supervisor.
I'm making a motion tonight, period.
That's how you do it.
And.
You cut it back to a hundred and fifty thousand, then you don't have to worry about having extra money. We made it with a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred.
Thousand dollars, Craig spent two hundred and fifty thousand of it, but he, he's like, I'll put it back, I mean, I can't believe you're even arguing this argument, be honest with me.
Marcus, how much is it total?
It's a million dollars.
Okay. Trey, can I talk to you outside for a minute, please?
No, we can talk about it in public right here, let's talk about it now.
No, because there's something that I wanna talk to the board about in closed session that deals with the PSA, and what you're doing is to. I would like to talk to you outside for a minute, I think I can explain this.
Explain it to them in publicly.
I have nothing to hide.
Okay.
Spit it out in front, but Facebook and your audience needs to hear. There's the issue.
Yeah, I heard.
There's an issue of purchasing non-covered service for PSA employees. PSA obviously doesn't have the money, the board supervisor.
I'm well aware, I'm well aware of the issue with the.
I understand that, but what you're, but what you're suggesting to do is going to make it impossible to do anything on the PSA matter, and, and the longer.
We're not gonna pay retirement benefits out of coal road, Lee.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about your only, you, if you do it as an additional.
We can go every month and increase this budget, can we not?
If you, if you do your motion right now, if you do your motion right now, that's gonna add a million dollars to this budget. Okay? You, you can only go to one point two one nine. Under the current budget before you hit the one percent, if you hit that one percent tonight, you add that much to the budget. That's already been advertised, you're going to have to have another public hearing on the budget.
Go over one point two.
Right, okay, well, I, and I, what I'm trying to say is, if you do this with the coal road money. You put it into the budget, because you wanna have it carried over essentially. And I must, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm, what I'm trying to say, you're gonna have to choose between the two things, and the thing with the PSA issue with the VRS. Is that that seven hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars is going to get bigger the longer the board waits to take action on it.
It's gonna grow like a tree, or one of these, uh.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know, all we've been told is it will increase as time goes on.
One month, if we vote tonight in June, and we have a July meeting, and we deal with the PSA issue, which is what we agreed to do, then what's the problem?
Why, why not? Things can do it. Got trouble with those, don't reach out, love.
We did a lot of things and voted here, and then asked the coal road to do it after the fact.
Right. I think you made the point really clear about it, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, I mean, can't, can't wait thirty days, can't even do the coal road, and then, maybe look.
You might have your three hundred thousand.
The coal road, we're done.
Ten days.
And then it'll be right back before us, I mean.
It ain't gonna, it's gonna hurt you that bad for it to be thirty day long, but.
It don't matter, I'm just not.
They're working there.
Uh, we're gonna have these amounts.
Just do some extra paper.
I'll leave it, Marcus, I want a picture of it, the exact amounts, and I'm gonna ask for the coal road budget to be increased to that. Well, let's, let's let the coal road look at first, Trey, if you're, if you're fine with that, then we can review it, that ain't a problem.
What's he right about, Lee? Well, I, the seven fifty eight, I think you could do as an additional appropriation in this fiscal year, as long as you don't go over one point one, because in this fiscal year. That the number where you hit the one percent is one point one. But there's another six hundred thousand, I think that Craig's gonna suggest. Adding to the budget, and then with this one million, you, you're gonna be.
So you're gonna bill the VRS tonight, put the six hundred thousand in.
Look, I was.
Seven fifty, seven fifty, let me try.
Okay, okay.
Seven fifty eight would be, would be something that we would do an additional appropriation tonight.
I'm a little confused, how come I haven't heard anything about seven hundred and fifty eight thousand?
We were gonna go in closed session.
Closed session. Trey would live.
Hell, we're out here, let's go in and tell me what the big deal is, why are we gonna put seven hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars in PSA?
Can I explain the process?
Absolutely, I'd like to.
Okay, so the process of actually being able to do it, mechanics of the county department. Is that we appropriate that tonight, and we don't go over our one point two amount, so we don't have to.
Give the PSA, right?
One. I asked them why we have to give PSA seven hundred and fifty eight thousand off.
So, we're, we're getting to get there. So, we do that, and then, so that's this year.
Hold on one second, do we need to go in closed session and explain this to the board?
Well, no, we're gonna let everybody hear about it.
This is a personnel issue, I could care less about, uh, the coal road being told in the public, does the VRS need to be discussed, because that's.
I really think it should.
Okay, motion's going to close session in regards to employees with the PSA.
Well, hold it, hold, hold, uh.
Let's just do that one issue, we got Cheryl still here, and some other people.
Okay, well, let me, let me at least, let me at least give the code section and, and the reason, okay? So it's a, um, it would be personnel, two point two, thirty seven, eleven, A one, and A eight. And, um, it's in regards to the possible purchase of non-covered service and the employees of the, uh, PSA in regards to VRS.
One second, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna clear the crowd, we need to speak, because this is a late meeting, that way they're not sitting there waiting on a bottle, we're gonna have a motion, close session, we give them. Uh, if the chairman wishes that we can get Cheryl, and, um, we've got some folks here at the council, you ladies need to speak.
Yeah, but it's a problem, that's gonna be resolved here. Wait just a minute here, see. I don't think we, do we have anybody else on the top?
Everybody in the cover, come on.
We don't have anybody else on, there's, you know, the top.
Cheryl, you didn't say they made it, it's not. You're a real good county chairman, I'm sure. Do you want one?
You want one?
It's, I guess it's protect.
Mars.
Don't you need to pause session?
We have a motion going to close session, and second, any discussion? Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Brannum. Mr. Stiltner.
Yes.
Mr. Ry.
I like to help, but I got here.
Yeah, the second station. Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion certified. We have motion to certify, we have second. Second, Mr. Brannum, any discussion, Mr. Cooper.
Uh, yes.
Mr. King, yes. Mr. Ry.
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner.
Yes.
Mr. Brannum. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we issue a check to either the. Do we pay VRS, or does PSA have to? Okay, I'm gonna issue payment to VRS for the eleven employees.
Twelve.
Twelve employees.
Forty eight months.
For forty eight months a piece, that they were cheated out of their VRS. Uncovered service lot?
Uncovered service.
Okay, and what's that amount, Trish? Go ahead, Trish.
I'll tell you the exact amount, but that was concluded as of May thirty third.
Motion probably needs to be for. Motion for whatever the amount is, uh.
There could be additional.
For the additional interest or fees above and beyond, what's the amount?
Seven hundred and fifty eight thousand five thirty three.
That amount plus interest or fees, uh, to bring it current for when we issue the payment. Um, and I want that done tomorrow. Motion's on the floor. Second, there's a motion on the floor, Mr.. Atkins, wait a second, by Mr. King, any discussion? Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Ry.
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner.
Yes.
Mr. Brannum. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And I'm staying. Now, so we're clear. So the motion is, like, one to ten. And we'll be making a motion in our next meeting. To correct the coal road problem. Where I can't get my work done. Because my district does not deserve to lose two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars, when the roads are in poor condition. Just so we're clear. That's all we need to do, come out in closed session, and. And the reason I did that is because I wanted to make sure our employees at PSA, which in my opinion are the hardest working employees in the county, were taken care of tonight, that's the only reason I did it, none, nothing else, period. So let's be clear about that, should it be made the next meeting?
Moving on, but Mr. Atkins, the, the coal road committee will need to take up that same issue.
I have a meeting called tomorrow.
Good work.
Okay, number fourteen. Everybody ready to move on? Consider approving the contract between Buckingham County and WL Construction and Paving Inc. for hot mid fast spot supplier and authorized chairman, county administrator, we have a motion.
They did it.
Second, any discussion? Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Ry.
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner.
Yes.
Mr. Brannum. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Number fifteen, consider approving to extend Ponderosa Road located in Rock Lake District. We have a motion by Mr. Stiltner, second by Mr. King, any discussion? Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Brannum.
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner.
Yes.
Mr. Ry. Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Number sixteen, consider adopting proposed ordinance entitled General County Budget, including dog tax fund, law library. Fund in the Head Start Fund and the School Budget. For the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and levy for tax year commencing on January first, twenty twenty three.
Chairman, chairman.
Page net.
That's, we need to pop up six hundred thousand before we. Approve the budget.
Okay. So, there's a motion need to be on that.
Is to, how do we wanna take that first? Put it in, uh, what do we call it? It's, it's, let me say, we have, uh, thing I sort of know, it's called National Improvement Commission Funds. For improvements to public safety, it, well, that's in public safety, that's the reason why group you guys put me on, that everybody calls the Casino. Authority, not actually all any kind of thing to do with the casino, but their funds that come from the casino each year. Most county ministers are on that in southwest Virginia, they just estimate, sure, we're gonna get about six hundred thousand dollars this coming year. So we, she's gonna give you a name of an account. That we'd like to put in the budget for next year. Uh, create a new account for it, and, and appropriate that six hundred thousand dollars. And when you do that, it likes to be a pass revolution, in addition to that, saying that we're gonna use it. For improvements in public safety. Now, you, you have options, you have three options, but we've talked about, the thing that we need to, to deal with right now is emerg, uh, rescue services, and that falls within public safety.
We just need a motion to.
We don't have to make a decision on how it's spent right now, we just put it in there, under that code, under that item, right?
We don't have operated rates.
I'm, I'm not voting to put it in that deal.
Department number three two oh five.
Do we have to pass something first, this one? Yeah, do we have to accept the risk?
The counties have done it, the wise has done it, um, pass one. Uh, you have the option for tra, uh, transportation, education, and public safety. And we, we're gonna run into a lot of expenses on public safety. So we, we recommend putting some public safety.
Question. If we have much money. Could we? Come up with before we go across, uh, amount of money we got in the fiscal budget here for this year, and relating to the school system right now.
So what, you wanna finish this, and then? Talk about the school system?
Yeah, I think.
You're gonna say a conclusion, I, I.
I think I understand what you're asking, Mr. Ry. In regards to the upcoming fiscal budget, twenty three, twenty four, that you're, got for you tonight. You can, if you wanna add any money to that budget before you approve it tonight. It's my opinion that if you go over the one percent for that budget, which is like one million, two hundred nineteen thousand plus dollars. That would trigger the requirement of having another public hearing on the budget. And obviously, I don't think you probably wanna do that, so, but that's the one percent issue on the budget, if that's what you're asking, how much you can add to that budget before you would trigger the requirement of having to have another public hearing.
If we add, I'm talking about her request now for the school system, uh, and what she was talking about, she was bringing the, uh, eight point one. And what we got in there for the seven point, uh, what is it, seven point six, seven point seven?
Seven point eight.
Uh.
We, we, we have the same amount. As last year, which is seven point seven, that's right, you see? In the, in the budget for next year.
They asked for eight point one.
We, we told them that should ask for seven point seven. They asked for eight point one.
We discussed that, I was down here, giving them an additional three hundred thousand.
My remembrance is they're gonna have a bunch of money left over that they're gonna come back and ask us for in July. Is that correct?
Roll over money and picks the rug on Hurley Middle School. Correct?
That's a different account. That's a different money.
You got more money left over besides the school construction. How much are you talking about that you have left over? Roughly, just ballpark. Okay, and you're needing four hundred thousand? Is that why you said you could make it to three hundred thousand? I thought so.
That's carryover money and that won't make it. No, I'm sure I said that, I'm not carryover.
I'll tell him, Trish, Trey, tell her.
Well, we can, uh, give her the four hundred thousand, not just keep her million dollars, I guess, could we?
Or you could tell her we don't roll over money, right?
Craig, we're gonna roll over coal road money, honey. Watch next time we meet.
Well, what I was wondering there, can you track that for my carryover money and still be in our budget?
I, I would recommend, even though they don't like this answer, is we wait until July and see how much money, we'll have a much better idea in this accountant in July, exactly how much, and then you won't have to vote twice.
Let's just do the six hundred thousand now. I mean, let's finish what we're doing with the six hundred thousand.
We've already got a motion on the, the table here to accept the resolution. Craig?
And put the six hundred thousand in.
Can we do? All right, that's what my motion was to... Do what?
On the resolution? On the resolution.
I was saying this for about two there now, I said him, but it was... Uh, if every rescue squad comes in here and wants to get the same deal that we've already got for Papa Jeff or Prater and for, they all want the same thing. Now, how much is it gonna cost us for the whole chavanger, you know, we've said that we're used to? If they hire to help this and hers to help this and hers to help her, how much is it gonna like cost us in the total to get that done? Yeah, and you know, and I know, I'm like jealous, was I? If there's one rattlesnake to be given away, I want my rattlesnake and that's what everybody wanted.
But we got six hundred thousand. I just want my coal road money.
So, how, how do you vote, Mr. Rice? This is just a resolution to, to put that money in.
So you don't want anybody... This isn't spending the money.
I don't want rattlesnakes.
I go ahead and vote the resolution, yes, sir, but then I say this.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins?
I make, yes, and I make a motion to accept the six hundred thousand, uh, in, um, the, add it to the budget from the tax agreement.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Can I say something now?
Yeah.
After we got that misdetermined?
Yeah.
Now, I just looking at our budgets, uh, in the last three years. Two years ago, our total was, or three years, forty-two million. Then it jumps to forty-four million or something, now it jumps to forty-eight million there. And then we gonna keep adding all this on there, uh, and where's our budget gonna stop?
Then you said we had to add library?
Library is gonna lose state funding if we don't add thirteen thousand, so I recommend you add thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand. What did their state? Are we, are we just gonna mail a motion on the six hundred thousand? We didn't pay it, did we?
You did.
Yeah, I...
You voted on the other one too.
You said yes. I thought you said yes.
Now, I don't know, James, but I was talking about, but now, all this property that they're buying, the paper or whoever, they're buying it, but and there's currently no one would count it. Now, how many of what's it gonna do to our collection of personal property there for the next year or whatever there are?
Exactly what it's gonna be, Roger, when they build a school at Southern Gap, if I fail in my mission to stop it, it's when my kids go to Hurley, or to Phelps and, and to Bradshaw, we're gonna lose ten thousand dollars in funding a kid that's gonna cripple accounting. Council's gonna go to Homemaker, Whitewood's gonna go to Richlands, and then we're really gonna see the crippling effect if they keep this crap up with this school. I mean, it takes real geniuses to, uh, escalate a trick like that.
Talk about the thirteen thousand for the library that we've gotta add on for the state money. We have a motion, Mr. King, second by Mr. Stiltner, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rice? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now...
What are they gonna do about the school issues?
But here's, here's the thing. The school budget has, what, eight point one for the local match. The county's budget has seven point seven million for the local match. And Corbin Stone told me years ago when we were having issues, you know, anyway, I'm not gonna go, that, that...
Let me ask a question for you, Trish. You're saying that we put seven, seven in the budget, but the state level funding is eight one?
No.
No, no, no. I'm saying the school's budget has eight point one. The county's budget has seven point seven for the local match. I'm just recommending until y'all decide what to do about any extra money, is that when you pass the budget, you make it clear that the, if, if there's any inconsistency or nonconformity between the school's budget and the county's budget that the county's budget number controls. Because if you don't, you can get stuck with their number. And you may decide that you're going to give them that money, but for purposes of proving the budget tonight, you wanna at least make it clear that what's getting approved is the county budget based on the county number, not what the school system has in their budget for the local match, because it's their budget becomes part of our budget.
I understand. Let me ask you a real question. You have construction money through the Hurley, uh, Middle Schools, um, uh, what, about one point six million in that account?
Yes, it's, uh, school, the state gave us school construction money that can only be used for school construction or improving classrooms, stuff like that. And we talked to them, I think, last month, and they said for us to, they would roll that over to the state, then we can roll that over to the next year. It has to be spent out by June twenty-four.
Did they, did they approve the entire roof for Hurley Middle School or just a portion of it?
The whole roof.
Okay, and you have an additional, in another account, rollover money of over a million dollars, correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be somewhere that, I'll probably be less.
In other words, we're gonna have to approve whether to give you some of that money or not, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll get it to them now that. What's your all's plans for the rollover money? Are you, I'm sure you're gonna ask for it, but why do you need it?
Um, you know, I have, I think I'm not telling you what they need to do that for. I know with the four hundred thousand, we were going to hire special ed teachers and, uh, we're reducing the interest rate for the employee.
With the four hundred thousand?
Yes.
So you're reducing it too?
From that thing that stands to be changing.
I'm okay with the four hundred thousand if, if, um, they're reducing their, uh, employees' insurance rates down to fifteen thousand, and then we'll deal with the million dollar rollover money.
Only general consensus of the board was you will wait till...
Well, they still have to come to us for the million dollars, so why not just take that money?
Well, Lee says it's easier if we just match, so there's no discrepancies in that. Well, to make it, what's the difference, one? Well, he says that it's easier, he's that, we're gonna have to vote, there, everybody knows that we're gonna have control of, of the budget if we do it. And they have to come to us with the million dollar rollover. It's not like they're gonna spend a million dollars in the next three weeks. So clearly, they're gonna have money, so why not just give them the, the four? That takes them up to the eight point one, everything's fine with the budget, and then when they come and want the million dollar rollover, we get the four back.
I'm with the seven, seven for now. We need a motion on the seven, seven.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, pass the budget with, uh, that reflects exactly what Lee said over there. I don't see him to cook all that down as far as what Lee said.
You're saying that this practice to the twenty, the seven, seven, eight, one, the...
Budget rule.
Is any nonconformity to county's budget that on the local match is full and what the school system has in their budget is seven point eight point one? If the county's number is controlled.
Pick up rollover and all that later.
I, I agree with Drew. I think at that time, then we can look at the four hundred thousand, now their one million rollover money, and maybe even, uh, I wouldn't care to do a little more on the rollover money if it was earmarked to reduce their school employees' insurance costs. I would be willing to give them the one million even if it was used to get their insurance cost down to eight percent or five percent even where we're at. I, I would be willing to give them all that money, so let me be clear about that. If the school board, uh, we'd have to earmark it here to be used for the employees' insurance cost, so if they're willing to do that, you come back with a request next month for us to, uh, for that rollover money to be used for that, you'll get you four hundred thousand on my vote, plus, uh, the additional six to be used. If you can come up with some numbers on that, what that would put their cost on insurance down to, uh, from fifteen down to eight or whatever it is, five, um, I'd be, if we go to five percent on them, if we can get them down to five percent with that other six hundred thousand, I'd give you the whole million.
Yeah, let me, let me ask this. The four hundred thousand, not counting the rollover, okay? Um, you said the rollover you were gonna use to help reduce some cost, is that right?
That's that, you don't know exactly what...
The four hundred thousand you were talking, that you were needing was to hire, uh, title, uh...
Special ed teachers.
Yeah.
Special ed teachers.
Teachers, yeah.
We had, so, we had like fifty fours, especially when you were...
I thought, I didn't think we'd call it special ed anymore. I thought we called it title nine or something, title something. I thought it was, anyway, whatever. Yeah, title one, and... Well, now, how's this gonna hinder you all with, uh, moving forward with trying to advertise for teachers, because right now, you technically, you don't have the million dollars, because you have to wait for us to approve it to be rolled over, so if they don't give you the four hundred thousand now that, you're not gonna have twenty special ed teachers, correct?
But if you're looking at five, it's only a little...
Five, okay.
Then maybe for the interest rate.
Yeah.
If we do not get those done tonight, we will have to wait until July, we get the, the bonus and all these values.
And that leaves you one month to advertise and get teachers hired in, correct? How hard is that after they've already accepted jobs somewhere else?
For Mr. King?
Uh, we were actually in discussion. So, that's, and people wonder why we don't get the first available quality teachers. As we sit here and argue four hundred thousand, that was actually promised to them, because I'm almost certain the majority of this board said they would vote for the three hundred thousand. Now you got them going back on. Power struggle.
I'm gonna draw my motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the budget that they've not warned that, uh, um, the sources have been, they're sending, and I request that the board, if it's passed, that Cheryl report back to this board at our next meeting with an amount that they have as a request for rollover money and it to be, uh, figured in to cut the school system employees' insurance costs down to five percent. That is the magic number we wanna be at with that rollover money. And that, whatever your request is, with the rollover money, you have the one million plus, uh, I feel like this board will agree to fund that to get the school employees' insurance cost down to five percent on your rollover money. So, so I'm clear, we're approving the budget tonight at eight point one for the school, school system, and you're requested to come back to this board next month, um, with numbers to get your employees' costs down on their insurance to five percent, and we're gonna allow you to use that rollover money for that purpose only. Is that the consensus of the board? Can we vote? We can't force them, but we can cut their budget if they don't behave. That's what we can do. They're in an election too, if they don't fix their employees' costs like they're supposed to, they won't be reelected, so that's the way I feel about it, 'cause they crap on their employees long enough. Uh, motion's on the floor to approve it with the eight point one.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a statement, any discussion?
Dang. Are we in discussion now?
We are now, 'cause we had motion and statement.
What an amazing vision. Man, that, I tell you, that's a good talk. I like that ideal.
What's that?
The one you just came up with. I'm good. It's not where you started.
Okay.
I agreed on, I had to make sure the rest of them. Any more discussion? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yeah.
I'm a yes. Okay, moving on. Number seventeen, consider adopting resolution regarding the Buckanning County Public Schools budget for fiscal year twenty-three. And... Make the adjustment to make the resolution say eight point one million.
Mr. Harris, I have to be on me?
Yes.
I think what you've done is you added that four hundred thousand to the budget, but you still need a motion to approve the budget as a whole, our system. And I'll prove the, the total, like... I'll make that motion. Okay. There's motion to approve budget, the second, the second, Mr. Atkins, any discussion?
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? Yes. And I'm a yes. Okay. Now we need a doctor resolution for the school system for eight point, we should change it to eight point one million.
Yes, just I would say it's a little here.
Okay. That's on fif- page fifty-one, how we're cutting their checks, correct?
Interesting.
Installments, full installments, motion. Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay.
In that resolution, it has seven point seven of local match.
Sandy said we change it to eight point one. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Moving on to number eighteen, consider adopting a resolution regarding the Buckanning County Public Service Authority budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Motion. We have a motion. And with, with the understanding that Craig is gonna correct the numbers on the five percent and seven percent tonight, or do we need to do it next week? Yes.
Yeah.
With the understanding to correct it seven percent on the PSA's funding, please put that in a minute.
Yeah.
Bob's reasonable, but five percent, we're doing two percent.
Motion. Okay. Addition. Addition to, additional two percent. Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Brandon, second it. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Number nineteen, consider approving the performance agreement between Buckanning County, Virginia, Buckanning County Industrial Development Authority, and Coronada Four LLC, and Buckanning Minerals LLC, and authorize the chairman, county administrator to execute the performance agreement with approval as performed by the county attorney.
This is the form you guys approved. I forget when we first approved this, last fall?
When we started talking about last fall.
Yeah, yeah. So this is the way you guys wanted it, or, I asked our lawyers not to get too deep into it, but we've finally got to a form he feels okay with it, the commissioner feels okay with it, and I feel okay with it, so it's ready.
Misery, no form?
Yes, she does.
We have a motion. Motion. Motion to Mr. Atkins, we have a second. Second, Mr. King, any discussion?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King? I'm a yes. Number twenty, consider approving the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement between Buckanning County, Virginia, Coronada Four LLC, and Buckanning Minerals LLC, Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority, and Buckanning County Industrial Development Authority, and authorize the chairman, county administrator to execute performance agreement with approval as performed by the county attorney. This, this is fine.
Yes.
Motion, Mr. Atkins, we have a second. Second by Mr. Cooper.
Second, Mr. Cooper, any discussion? Mr. Cooper? Mr. King? Mr. Wright? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? I'm a yes. Number twenty-one, consider approving bid and contract to furnish and install an expanded polystream insulated board between raised flutes of metal panel roof systems at the Hurley Gymnasium and authorize the chairman county administrator to execute contract with approval as performed by the county attorney. Paul's a bid on that. Over the five hundred seventy dollars. That's pretty good. Bernie Inc. Who? The Bernie. Uh, I don't know who that is, but anyway, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
Any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? I'm a yes. The twenty-two, consider approving bid and contract regarding general turf maintenance for the athletic fields at the Paupler Gap Athletic Park. Authorize the chairman county administrator to execute contract with approval as performed by the county attorney. Mr. Cooper, you might.
I don't think we had a bid on that. That's going to have to go back out.
We didn't get a bid?
We did not.
Okay. Number twenty-three. Consider approving bid and contract regarding the purchase and installation of a five ton heat pump at Buckanning County Sheriff's Office and authorize the chairman county administrator to execute contract with approval as performed by the county attorney.
Did you get a bid on that? Yes, sir.
Well, that's an error for seventy-three fifty-six, seven thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars. Kenneth, you good with that?
Um, yes, sir.
Motion.
There's a motion, Mr. Atkins, we have a second. So second, Mr. King, any discussion?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. King? Yes, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Twenty-four, consider approving Robinson Farmer Cox Associates PLLC to reissue the twenty-twenty-one financial statements at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars. This is a I have to say, it's, it's, it's because the school system waited until October to November to request reimbursement from the year, which ends June thirtieth usually, which put the requests and the money come in so late that it was outside the normal amount of time that they see this money come in. When they did their initial audit, they didn't catch that. They caught it, I guess, looking at it later after they've done the audit and so now they have, we have to change that because kind of like this leftover money we're asking you all, we're talking about. Um, so we have to completely redo our audit, which is mainly just adding that and, and, and just, just getting it out to everybody now. Mr. Atkins, we have a second. Second, Mr. Brandon, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? I'm a yes. Twenty-five, consider adopting the following resolution for the ratification of the acceptance of the following two deeds regarding acquisition of property as part of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers non-structural project. Do I need to name? Motion by Mr. King, we have a second. Second, Mr. Brandon, any discussion? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Consider appointment, reappointment to the Buckanning County Department of Social Services Administrative Board for the Rock Lake District. Current is Amanda Blankenship. Is that your repointing same one?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Number twenty-seven, we're going to table because I hadn't found anyone yet. Twenty-eight, consider appointment, reappointment to the Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens for a four-year term. Current is Love, Smile, and Karen Vander Linden. We need a motion, we need a motion on it. Motion, Mr. King? We have a second. Second, Mr. Brandon, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Kenneth? Yes, Mr. Wright?
Yeah.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins? And I'm a yes. Consider approving the following additional appropriations. Motion. Motion by Mr. Who is it? Mr. Atkins? Or Mr. Brandon? We have a second.
Five hundred dollar charges. I've got a question real quick. These appropriations back to the litter control camp. Where did that fifty and that two hundred and those fifty dollar amounts come from? How about the uh, the fines? Yes. I thought we discussed that those were going to go back into my parking, wreck my parking development account. Do I?
You got two fifty?
Two fifties?
Yeah.
You sure that's not reservations?
Five hundred dollar land use come out of.
This court date on the one, uh, Mr. Moise? Do they have a court date set on the one or up in uh, that we had the video on?
Which one, Craig?
The one that we had the video on?
Yeah, one of them, yes, yes.
Court date has been set? I know it's been served.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, the criminal case, yeah, yeah. The arraignment's set for June twenty-sixth.
Okay.
We have a motion on those.
Any of these, any of these, that civil penalties are, are whatever?
It's the two fifty dollars.
Was the civil penalties? Okay. Okay. All right, second.
Second, any discussion? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Wright? Mr. King? Mr. Cooper? I'm a yes.
I, I'm a yes. I'm a yes. I didn't even get a chance to say.
Sorry, I was on thirty. Hurry now. Consider approving a transfer in amount of five thousand six hundred twenty dollars to fourth inch from thirty-five asset picture to fund one. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? I'm a yes. Thirty-one, consider approving an issue payment for contributions. Did you put mine on there? You got mine on that one?
No, no, we're not.
Here you go. Do it all together, please. Out of the six hundred thousand that we just put in, we've got a operating proposal here from Davenport, life risk, our lifesaving crew to get us some help on our rescue squad and the number they came up with is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars and seventy-one cents. We'd like to take that as the six hundred thousand.
We have a motion to do that. Go ahead, issue a plan to the first two months. Correct. Well, we're monthly, it's been two months, mostly monthly. Right, everything was two months for initiative, develop a further a rescue. And that starts July first. And then uh, we're going to get it started a little sooner, then we'll hopefully not play up. Um, so that'd be the end of operating those multiple, they've been working up here. So in a little bit, then uh, start at July first, issue those first two months, then the payroll. Well, that would need to be done July first. I don't want to make a payroll. Um, most of them. It was a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars and seventy-one. Yeah, we'll get you, we'll get a hundred and fifty-three first, within the first two months, July.
No, that's a hundred and fifty for the whole year, per year. Russell Prager is going to do the first two months and then Davenport's going to set up bill.
Mention Russell Prager and Davenport.
It's, yeah, we don't have all the paperwork. So Russell Prager just want to fill in for the first two months.
Six hundred thousand, you're taking a hundred and fifty-three. So it's going to leave four forty-seven, is that right? Four forty-seven, that will be split into twelve equal amounts, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Or be the point of four, four rescue squad?
Is it going to be divided?
We're working on.
Relation into the rest of it. I'm, I'm just comfortable with doing for a council tonight.
Yeah, because I think you got to be real careful on how that's stood up.
Well, I, one thing I was thinking about, and I, I'm not shielding Prager, we, you know, I looked at Prager's books uh, a year or so ago, just to make sure, you know, that I thought everything, you know, I mean, we need to make sure with everybody's fire departments that, you know, the operating ratios and everything, you know, look pretty good. You know, I mean, you know, Prager's doing a lot of volume, Knox is doing a lot of volume, you know, before we keep funding and funding, I just think we need to look at all of them, make sure that they're running, running right.
I guess my question is, this is emergency services, correct? Are we talking about fire and rescue?
This rescue.
Rescue only?
This is just rescue only. This is twelve hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And then the after hours is covered by, uh, they will be required to go out.
I know that, that's Davenport, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about the remaining balance of four hundred and forty-seven pounds.
Yeah, we ain't got there yet on that.
Okay, are you talking about wanting to leave that with rescue only, or is it going to be split up?
I think the resolution that we did was to put it in rescue only. There was only three items that you could use it on.
Emergency services and the other.
Yeah, boat safety.
Yeah.
Education, which I think.
And roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think with what we got going on down in the county, I, I mean, I think we can use it.
I just, I thought emergency service would actually include fire, fire.
Dude, everybody, I get it soon, get the rescue squad.
You know, it's sad about some of them.
I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Atkins, and a second by Mr. King. Any, any discussion? Any more discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Atkins? I'm a yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Trey?
Trey.
I'll do a second. Okay, so we do, are we, are we done with the contributions now? Are we ready to go on better?
Not a, I can't call a month.
Let me go on to thirty-two while we're waiting on contributions. Consider ratifying the following temporary part-time weed cutter and litter cleanup employees. Do we have a motion? Or what? On number thirty-two, second. Mr. Brandon made the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, consider requesting planning commission to review comprehensive plan to determine if any amendments are needed pursuant to Virginia Code Section fifteen point two, that's two two three zero. Motion, Mr. Wright, we have a second. Second, Mr. Brandon? Uh, any discussion? Mr. Atkins? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, Benji, did you have something? Or was?
No, it's close. And when you resolve the issuing rescue thirty-three, we're going to call this to the ten to nine one one call. If they don't, if they call this first and we're out, we didn't have it on the list, they call.
I think somebody said at the last committee meeting that we we talked about it in here, but we didn't make a motion to change the whole plan, didn't you say, Lee or Sandy or somebody?
Bart would be the best person to answer that question. I, I thought that maybe they were taken off and then that their area was divided up between two other.
Say, for instance, if they call Knox and they're on a call, uh, they don't even call rescue thirty-three, there's an issue here at this field. So we need to add, I'm going to make a motion to add him back to the list as a second call. They, will they call our rescue squad first? They, uh, do a second call out to, uh, rescue thirty-three.
Emergency response, I was wondering if the, uh, guy, Mr. Bart didn't have the map update. But there is an actual threat.
This officer can answer the question. Uh, I think one of the issues that I will want to run against you is there is not a sign there of a rescue thirty-three. They can't I don't want to say it, if I understand, can't even dispatch. People have to call the bridge. If I understand, I could be wrong. All right, I want this to be about, this is my.
Well, Mr. Atkins, I'll, I'll tell you, the ordinance that we have, we can require them. I mean, there's a permit process. And I don't even know that the permit process has really been active. But within that permit process, we can require that they agree to do certain things. So it can be fixed. But, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we're going to have to take a look at.
Him, through myself, I'm. We'll set up a meeting in my, in my, I want rescue thirty-three here. Or, or, and they figure, and I want to understand this better and I want to this is trying, you know, everybody in the room, that way everybody has to look at us. We'll swing this, this entire call. So we'll get that, I'm, I'm going to whip around a motion and have the meeting set up. Okay, there's an issue that I want to know, I want, uh, Harry to, uh. Let's go number, back to thirty-one, consider, for Harry doesn't hear that. She's going to dispatch. Put up a new representative. Okay, play up. Motion to go in close session.
Motion to go into close session, we have a second. Oh, sorry.
Okay, uh, two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, eight, uh, Bay County Code, Section seventy-seven dash thirteen, by any, some, any, and uh, and then we had a personal audit. So we have one in my office, one business. Works.
Your motion, Mr. Stiltner, you seconded it. Any discussion? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Wright? On close session? Mr. Cooper? Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Phil? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I'm a yes. The motion is certified. Oh, yeah, Lee's got it. So.
Yeah.
Let Lee read.
Uh, I want to talk about eight, eight. Talk about a water line proof or a road structure proof. So I want to go in one. I think that's it.
Second. We have a motion certified and second. Any discussion?
Second.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, yeah, I got it.
I'll see y'all.
See you. Okay, uh, that it, do we do, uh, contributions?
Hold up on that a second, I gotta get some help here.
Let me do something real quick while he's thinking about what he needs to do. I need to, uh, transfer some, uh, some, uh, money for the Whitewood Flood Fund forty-nine. And, uh, we're running a little short on that. And I need to transfer the money from fund forty-four to fund forty-nine, and I'd like to request two hundred thousand dollars for that. It's two hundred thousand.
From forty-four to forty-nine?
From forty-four to forty-nine, which the forty-four is the, uh, the, uh, already flood, flood money from Knox, they're sitting over there, but, yes, it's forty. We have a motion on that, right? I'm making a motion, can I get a second? Second, somebody?
Second.
Can we do your job?
Yeah, you do that.
Can we do your job when you're doing that?
Second. Who's the vice chairman, take over?
I am, but he, he.
Okay. What we got? We have a motion, did somebody second it? Did somebody second it? Okay, Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes. I don't play golf, I'm not, I don't. Now, are you done?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to, uh, advertise for a waterline installation crew. Um, we're gonna need a, uh, four-man crew, kinda equal to the bridge crew, there'd be a supervisor, uh, equipment operator, and two general labors for the waterline crew. I need, uh, that's in the form of a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Brannum, any discussion? Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper? And I'm a yes.
Also, we're gonna make a motion to advertise for a, uh, construction crew.
Mr. Chairman, let me make one now, there to move Justin Lowery to full-time.
We have a motion to move Justin Lowery to full-time? And a second. Mr. Wright made a motion, Mr. Stiltner made a second. At the same salary as, as Mr. Black? Okay. We have a motion and we had a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cooper? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to advertise for a construction crew. Uh, road construction, uh, repair work, uh, basically, uh, what are your figure, Marcus? Five-man crew?
Yeah, which, uh, operator, truck driver, and two laborers.
Another four-man crew, so that'd be, uh, equipment operator, a truck driver, and two labors, correct? That's in the form of a motion.
Correct. Do we have a motion on the floor, a second? Any discussion? Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And I'm also making a motion to set up a, uh, hiring committee. And I'm gonna have Marcus Stiltner, Craig Horn, Drew, Mr. Brannum, and myself.
Do we have a motion on the floor, we have a second? Any discussion? Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay, uh, four-man crew, is that a construction crew?
Yes.
Okay, and it's an equipment operator, a truck driver, and one for? Okay, and then the other is, we need to review? And that market?
Interview comedian, I'm sorry.
What about the personnel committee?
Different.
Interview the entire community, and that's Marcus Drew, Craig Stiltner, Phil Brannum, and that's what? Is that right?
Yes.
Look, on those, uh, advertisements, the salaries are negotiable. Depending on experience.
We will.
Um, actually, we didn't vote through that on that committee. We didn't vote for the committee.
Never did.
Did we?
Never.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. What you got, Jeff?
Uh, we need to, uh, get interviews for that, uh, E I S now, with, with, with personnel committee.
What about contributions, we need to prove contribution, is everybody done with them?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve, compliment motion by Mr. Cooper, need a second? Second, Mr. King, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes.
Sandy, we, I, I'll just say this, there's no, we're firing a motion, but we need to have, for inquiries like that, we need to have some more backup. If we can get more backup provided to this.
I'd be.
And where are this one?
Uh, thank you, I'm a boy. Oh, hey, John. I gave him, uh. I gave him back to you.
I'd like to transfer ten thousand dollars from my senior citizen's account to my highway streets and bridges.
Second, any discussion? Mr. Brannum?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Anything else before we? Yeah, are we gonna? And then motion, we have a second?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I've got a couple of motions. Absolutely, we do. Yeah, I will throw my motion. I'd ask the board to, uh, move to adopt an amendment to County Code Section seventy-seven thirteen, the new subsection G, which is basically a, a public nuisance provision, and the, um, added to the abandoned structure ordinance. Uh, in my, and.
Motion. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes.
Set up, uh, a motion to set a public hearing whenever the board's meeting next in regards to that particular ordinance.
Cooper? Oh, Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes.
Just a silver. At six-thirty.
Do we need to make a motion on that? Clear the motion, it's a second, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner? Brannum? I'm a yes. Now, what else, Lee, you had something else?
Okay, second, two more.
Okay, Lee's got a couple more things. Okay, um, there's a foster estate abandoned structure that we've been working on. And if Bart Chambers will, um, provide documentation that that structure is a, uh, public nuisance, that the threat to the public health and/or public safety is an immediate risk. But ask the board to make a determination to waive any other procedural requirements under that new subsection and proceed to take that structure down.
Make that motion. Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes.
The last one I have is in regards to the abandoned structure across from the, uh, Riverview Elementary Middle School that we've now determined is on the property probably owned by the D T Stiltner heirs. That structure's right on four-sixty, I think Mr. Brannum's sister can, it's, it is clearly a public safety hazard, 'cause it may fall into the road at, at any moment. So I would ask for the same determination, uh, by the board that you just made on foster state.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Mr. Cooper? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Stiltner?
Yes.
Mr. Brannum? I'm a yes. And don't we have to vote on something, uh, with waste authority? Don't we have to approve the contracts? Didn't Toby send those?
The transportation agreement is ready to be approved.
We'll, we'll have to look at it.
I will see.
But there was another agreement they sent us on Friday that I haven't had a chance to look at, if, if the board wants to approve it subject to my approval as a form, I don't even think that we're a party to all three.
No, I didn't think.
Though I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Mr. Edward sent it, both agreements for us to look at, I've reviewed the first one, the transportation agreement, and I think that's okay. This other one, you could approve it in regards to its subject to me approving it as a form.
We had to court out, or I had one in July, we probably did.
I think you done, I think there were some changes on it, didn't they tweak it a little bit or something? I'm, I'm okay with transportation, I've reviewed that. And we can approve it on, on, I mean, we could, on lead approval for the transportation. And the transportation agreement's fine, I suggested one change, and, um, uh, that, they made that, and so that one's fine. The other agreement, I haven't had a chance to look at, but I'm not even sure we're a party to it, but if you want to approve that, subject to me reviewing it.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept this with, uh, contingent upon Mr. Moise's changes, if possible, there's any there or whatever.
So, well, I will say, they, they made some changes to the contract, just based on, because we had to go out to bid. So we did, we did go out to bid, trying to, and, uh, well, request for a proposal, it was a proposal, wasn't a bid. We had to, we were in a bad contract before, and we had to, uh, get out of that. And we went out for proposal, this is what we came back with, this is a different, it's, it's the same deal, price goes up, but we're locked in for three years, we're not locked in for five.
We can, we can.
We'll need two more if we want to.
It is. Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, do most, your motion, go ahead. We're gonna have a second on Mr. Stiltner.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
That was a motion to approve this.
No, Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Wright? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Okay.
That's why I wanted to get that.
They're all, they don't, those have already been deemed.
That amendment was, wasn't it?
Right. That allows us to fulfill that, that resolution.
Motion to adjourn.
That's motion, and so to adjourn. Yes, Mr. Brannum? Mr. Stiltner? Mr. Wright? Mr. Cooper? I'm a yes.